Five oh five on March twenty sixth, we have a very short agenda tonight. And that's not any criticism to you for the presentation you're going to give. So we have a public comment and then a national grid hearing for River Street pole location, followed by the FY twenty six town administrators recommended budget and any other topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair. So we'll start with open public forums. Anyone who has anything to speak to that is not on the agenda?
I have one.
I don't think you can. No, all right, go. What do you got?
Kind of got it. So a resident reached out to me in regards to Groton, Hall Street and School Street where they need, and there's a, it's a yield going into Groton there. And so if you're going.
Hall and School, yeah, okay.
Yeah, Hall and School, and then you're gonna keep going up into Groton towards the wide.
And Lake Street is, yeah, it's a four.
Yeah, right across there. And with the new owners and that they put a big white fence up, it's actually hard to see around it. So they were sort of checking to see if there was a world where we put a stop sign just to get someone to stop on School Street. It's sort of inch out a little more slowly so you can see what's going on rather than yield and run through it.
So the first thing that pops into my mind about that is the fence been placed so that is not in violation of the bylaw that the highway department had about certain objects blocking the view.
If it's on the right way.
If it's in the right of way.
Yeah. This resident checked with the highway commissioner.
Okay.
And he said, you know, really, it's a select board matter to determine whether a stop sign seemed feasible there or not.
Well, did they say that the fence was in the appropriate place?
That I don't know.
Okay.
And it also makes me think of the traffic incident we had, what was it? It was where we had after the big night.
Yeah, Mel Oak.
It was right in the middle.
Mel Oak and man.
Yeah. And that too is also kind of a blind spot, right?
I have a list of intersections that should be stop signs if we want to put that on the agenda at some point.
Yeah, we've been talking about it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I've spoken with David at highway too, because he had some spots in there that he thought there should be stop signs. But there's A, nothing, or B, a yellow sign.
Yeah. I just think it might be, you know, you seem to be running into, you know, issues that people are just.
Cars on the road.
More cars on the road and people are looking at their phones more often. I'm guilty of it a lot of times, you know, looking at my phone, driving.
There's some people just either, even if it shifts the direction, you stand at the phone and see which way to go and not pay attention on the.
Yeah. So maybe it's, if you have a kind of a hot list, then we sort of combine it with ones we heard from residents, maybe look, you know, meeting, you know, maybe after town meeting, just let the dust settle budgetary wise and sort of sit down and sort of walk through that stuff and say, hey, here's the top four or five that we've had some incidents. Let's see what we can do to help you guys and help our residents out that way.
Yeah, that sounds clear.
Cool. That's why I'm in the public comment.
Okay.
Wasn't that bad.
No, it wasn't bad at all. No, not bad at all. Okay. Anybody else? You ready? Okay. Next up, we have the national grid hearing, River Street Pole location. Do we have a motion we need to read to open the hearing for this?
I don't have a motion to open the hearing, but you have the hearing now, so I just read the first paragraph.
Do you want me to read it?
If you'd like to, you may.
Um, yeah, yeah, sure. The Duncell Board of Selectmen, should be Select Board, Duncell Select Board. Will hold a public hearing on the following pole and wire locations petitions, petition filed by National Grid on Wednesday, March twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, at five oh five P M. For the following Massachusetts Electric Company, D B A, National Grid, and Horizon New England Corporation request permission to locate poles, wires and fixtures, including necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Uh, this is River Street. I won't go through this full read about it, but, um, River Street. Where there's a new subdivision going in.
Okay. We have someone here from National Grid?
Yep.
Yeah, come on in.
Sure. It's really just a midspan pole between two already existing poles that is going to be used to feed a new eleven single family residential development. So it's really it.
It's going on the same side?
Yeah, it's on the same side as the existing poles. There's, there's not even houses nearby. It's, it's a new development, new residential underground development. So we're using that pole for, as a riser pole to get the three phase power to the, to head that to transformers and U R D.
Any concerns of those families, if all of them do solar or anything like that? Just because I know the subdivision across the street has quite a few solar homes.
Um, I don't know at this time. I can research if there's any distributed generation projects going on there, but from what I know of this guy, there, I don't see any solar. I mean, it's possible later on for like the homeowner to want solar, but we have our own group with the National Grid that deals with that.
Okay.
So you're bringing three phase in up to that point from?
The three phases are already there. It's a midspan pole between two existing poles that have three phase primary on it. And so we're putting a midspan one at the end of the, uh, driveway to the U R D.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
That's why I'm here.
Fair enough. Um, so we need to read aloud, or I guess we don't have any questions.
I don't know. There aren't new wetlands there.
There's no houses nearby that you're, you know, want, you know, butters or anything.
Do we, do I have to read aloud this whole thing?
There's a draft motion on page, sadly. Before you read it, I ask one question.
Yeah.
Not related to this poll, but related to another poll. So, um, there's a poll at Groton Street and Cross Street that I've been working with National Grid to try to get some place to focus. And so there's a new poll there. Charter, Spectrum's moved their equipment, but my biggest gripe is I've become like the project manager for this. Like I'm, I am coordinating with Horizon, Charter, National Grid to get this equipment moved when it's your poll. So I, I.
They're joint owned poles. We only own the top half of every pole. So that's why sometimes we'll see like double set poles. It's because when we set a new pole, we only own the top half of it and Verizon owns the bottom half. And we're in charge of installing the pole and they're in charge of removing the old pole and a lot of times.
So who's responsible with coordinating the, the removal of the equipment from one pole and, and placing it on the other?
So, uh, just to get some clarification, the new pole right now has no existing equipment on it?
It's, well, it has Charter, Spectrum's equipment on it now because they moved it.
Right. So, but when National Grid installed the pole, they didn't move the wires over from the old pole?
No.
Oh, that's.
Oh, maybe, maybe. I, I shouldn't say no. I don't believe so. From my understanding, based on the numerous exchanges I've had with everybody under the sun about this one poll, um, my understanding is that National Grid is going to move theirs up again.
Uh, that's.
And if that, that could be wrong, but that's my understanding.
That's not typically how new pole sets are done. When we cut, we cut the top off, we move the pole. We move our infrastructure under the new pole and we leave the bottom half for Verizon to do their work later on.
That's not, uh.
That's usually how, I mean, I'm not too familiar with it, whatever pole you're talking about.
Yeah. No, 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 I don't expect you to. But no.
It's pretty unsightly though, and residents are, I've, I've heard about that one as well from some folks on Cross Street there. It's just like, what's going on?
I haven't seen it.
Yeah, it doesn't look good.
All right.
And with all the wind we've had and everything.
Did they just started this recently?
So Verizon is responsible for removing this pole, moving the cable wires over.
Yeah.
Okay, like who is responsible to coordinate the work? That's my question.
Well, I mean, you wouldn't coordinate anything with National Grid. We did our, our job. Yeah, we moved the wires and set the pole. So now.
Okay, so then what? What hap, I'm trying to understand what happened.
Can we just take it out ourselves?
So you, yeah, that's the thing, like, you just move, put the pole and move your stuff and say, okay, great, we're done.
That's pretty much it, yeah.
Then how does anyone else know that it's there?
So we have like a process within our companies because we, Verizon purchased interest and agreed pole set that we do so that they have a lot of space within the pole to put their cable wires, which is why they're joint owned. And the agreement we have is that we set the poles, they remove the poles.
Okay.
So we will set the new pole, we'll put our, like, you know, high voltage lines on it or whatever may be there, transformer, whatever. And then we leave the rest of the pole for Verizon to change their wires over and then they're responsible for moving the pole. So.
So it sounds like it should be Verizon.
Yeah, so how do they know, how do they know it's there?
Well, we have like a, it's, we call it the exchange of notice. Um, it wouldn't mean anything to you guys, but within our company, every time when you set a new pole, it's joint owned, we send all the information to Verizon and then it's up to there.
So they get, right, once you put the pole, set the pole and move your stuff.
Yep.
Somehow, there's some way that that information gets to Verizon and says, okay, now it's your turn.
Yeah, usually even before the pole is set, all this information is sent to Verizon. Like we plan to replace this pole for X, Y, and Z reasons, like a safety hazard or whatnot, and, um, upon the new pole set, like after we've cut the top off for infrastructure, it's on them to remove it.
Okay, how about Spectrum? Who would tell them?
Uh, Spectrum, I'm not sure. I know Verizon is mostly who we deal with, but.
I'm just frustrated by, because I don't want, because.
It's actually a very common thing.
I know, I've, I know.
For people to, because everyone thinks it's National Grid that's leaving these double set poles everywhere. It's really Verizon that hasn't gone there yet to remove it.
But, yeah, I mean, somebody has to own it in, in all these situations, like it's this. And when I ask, even like trying to get Spectrum to do it, I don't want to belabor the point, but even to get Spectrum to do it, I reach out to National Grid, they're like, oh yeah, I don't know, I don't have a contact with Spectrum. I'm like, okay. So now I'm chasing my tail, we're trying to find someone. I mean, it's just weird.
Thousands of pole sets, like within a month, you know.
No, I get, I get that, but it's also somebody's responsibility to make it safe and remove them. And it just doesn't, I mean, we don't have a ton of, it's not really huge problem, but in this case, I'm like project managing this thing. I don't know why I'm doing it.
Yeah, I mean, based on the picture you showed, like National Grid doesn't own any of those lines on there. It looks like they already set the new pole up the top off, like our standard process. And so really, it's Verizon, you need to have that in order.
I am.
Can I just ask?
I was talking to National Grid first, now I'm.
Sorry, we're giving you a lot, too long to answer. Yeah.
But so I, I'm also a resident, I live on Hall Street, so I look at this every day when I'm coming up. Um, and it's not, all of National Grid stuff is not on that pole. The shorter pole is the one that's like this.
Yeah, the shorter pole, the one with all the like cables and like, like.
Everything except for like, the charter lines are all on the shorter pole.
Yeah, so they're just having gotten around to change it over to the new pole and remove the old one. So really, it's, it's up to them and their scheduling.
But none of those wires are National Grid wires?
No, we only own the top half, the high voltage, the very top pole and the secondary voltage, about six people of that. And then a, after that, everything is all cable, um, like.
Fiber optics, yeah.
You know, fiber optics.
Okay. Thank you.
But it is a very common question. They don't know why is this pole.
Yeah.
We'll be on the poles unless they're solely owned by National Grid.
Yeah. It's just, I mean, it's also like the safety hazard of it. Like if it comes down on a car, like who, who would we call to say, your pole hit, you know, Kieran Meehan as he drove by, like, right? What's the li, the liability is increasingly precarious for the town because it's the town roadway, but it's not our pole. If the pole hits and kills somebody walking a dog, then like, I'm going to want to know who to go after.
It's definitely right. Because I mean, our authority having jurisdiction ends when you set the new pole and move your stuff over to the new one.
Okay.
So it's completely up to Verizon or, or cable companies to turn to the old one, that's the agreement we have with them.
Okay.
And then we are pretty difficult sometimes to get in touch with.
Yeah. Sorry, I think that's what we're experiencing. I think it's, because like you said, it happens everywhere, right? Like in communities, things get archived over time and it's not our, you know, T A should be chasing it, you know, because like I guess I would think it would be the utility provider. I digress, so.
Yeah, I'm good.
Thanks for letting us punch, punch you around about there.
I know it's not your fault, it's just a message to get back. It's, it's just a chronic problem everywhere, which is these double poles happen and then all the utilities are pointing at each other saying it's their fault. And I appreciate you explaining it the way you did, but it still is frustrating for the community to
No, I totally agree.
Be in a position where you're coordinating this work when it's really the utilities that should be doing it. And someone should actually own that process and it doesn't seem like anyone does, that's all.
Well, if we go do it ourselves, we'll see how quickly someone shows up.
Um, sure. If you call Verizon and say, this is about to fall over, we need someone here right now.
Yeah.
I have.
Oh.
And I've, and I've emailed them, yes. And I've done the same with National Grid, I've done the same with Charter and Spectrum, so.
Yeah, I can understand why you would care to get from National Grid, but you're relinquishing.
No, no, I think, I mean, I've, everybody, it's not that I haven't heard anything. But just the, the act, the action is less than what, but it's okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, cool. All right. Do we have a motion for the hearing?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
No, you can't.
I move to approve National Grid to erect and maintain poles and wires to be placed thereon together with such sustaining and protective, protecting fixtures as said companies may deem necessary as proposed in the public way or ways herein after referred to as requested in a petition in the following location. River Street dash National Grid to install one J O pole on River Street beginning at a point approximately two hundred and sixty feet south of the center line at the intersection of River Street and Chapman Street. And install one new forty five, forty five two pole on River Street to power the new residential development. And further, to grant permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables and wires in the above and or intersecting public rays for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes.
All right. Second, is there any further discussion on this? Being none, all those in favor?
Kieran Meehan, I.
You have Anne Spain's eye.
Thank you.
Good to go. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, FY twenty six budget presentation. You want to run through the presentation quickly so that the.
I will.
Folks watching at home can.
Yeah.
Come with it.
Okay. So a broad overview of the budget, uh, tax levy, and you have all the background detail and all that, but I just a broad overview. Tax levy for operating is increasing with the gap in by three and a half percent. Our excluded debt service is significantly decreasing by almost fifty, forty six point seven five percent. So that combined, um, totals of two point two percent increase in the total levy. Our charity estimate is based on the governor's proposal for almost five percent increase. And then we're also estimating local receipts to increase by fifty thousand or six point six seven percent. In total, our total revenue being appropriate is, is increasing by two point eight six and that includes everything. That includes water and price C P A if that is happening. So total operating debt expenditures increasing by six point five nine percent. This is the level service budget. And here's just the breakdown of the increases by budget category. Our budget plan for FY twenty six also includes fifty dollar, fifty thousand dollar free cash appropriation to our general stabilization fund from free cash and another fifty thousand dollar appropriation from free cash to the newly created capital improvement program stabilization fund. Some of the major changes in our budget, health insurance rates are increasing by fourteen point one three percent. While our health insurance rates are increasing, are actually increasing by that amount, I've only increased the health insurance budget by two percent. So we have some flexibility because of the wide range of increases and people rolling off, people rolling on. We're going to lose some of that, um, this, for next year. Our pension assessment is increasing by twenty four percent. Um, general liability, projection, we don't have definitive numbers, but projection is three point two seven. Our regional dispatch assessment is coming online. Um, I think this should say twenty eight, I'm sorry, it just says twenty nine right now. But, um, and the increase at that time would be fifty percent of our total assessment. So in year, is it year four or three? Year four, we get a fifty percent assessment charge. We get the first three years free. And so rather than coming up with that entire amount, which would be in the range of probably fifty five to sixty thousand dollars, we're trying to build up that amount year over year so that we're preparing for it rather than scrambling at year four. So we baked in twenty two thousand dollars this fiscal year, ten thousand increase in the police budget and their communications line and twelve thousand dollar increase in the fire communications line. So, and the idea is for each fiscal leading up to twenty twenty eight, um, we will do that so that we have about that. The Grand Dunsbury's School District Assessment is increasing seven point nine percent. The Greater Lowell Tech High School, ten point nine two percent.
What does that translate to? I mean, because it's a small amount of our budget. It's, it sounds like a high jump, but it's ultimately not a big hit.
Eighteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay.
Roughly.
Yeah.
Budget dust like Robinson?
Yeah, budget, yeah.
The total municipal operations and debt service budget is increasing by four point one nine, municipal salaries by four point nine three. And like I said, um, debt service is drastically, dramatically decreasing this year. Um, and, but the debt service we're carrying is based on, um, the current debt schedule. This is all review of the revenue, but I don't have to really go through this in depth and I just basically talk about that. The only thing I'll mention is our free cash use. I've separated it out a little bit so we can really see the number, the number that's supporting our operating expenses. So this year it's a hundred and five thousand dollars. The free cash for town articles, that is the general stabilization, that is the C I P stabilization, and that is our capital budget. Here's a breakdown of the levy that I just went over. State aid, this is a breakdown of the governor's local aid proposal. This gives you the history of our state aid essentially showing that it's been pretty, it's, it's not increasing with in similar ways that arts practices are.
Yeah.
So our total free cash certified available for appropriation this year is seven hundred and ninety one thousand nine hundred forty two dollars. The town is, my budget is proposing to use four hundred and eight of that. So that, the, the variance between seven ninety one and four oh eight is what will have, uh, what will maintain in our free cash balance. This is, this is the history of our free cash use. Do you have any questions or something? These are the total expenditures. This gives you an idea where our money is going and the percentage, percentages. These are the increases in each budget category.
For that previous slide, the sixty four point six?
Yeah.
Like last year, we were not at sixty four point six, right?
It's roughly.
It's always moving that ballpark.
Where are you talking?
So if you look at the pie chart?
Oh, oh, I'm, she was right, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, the schools, okay.
Yeah, just because I know like sometimes people say like, well, what's been the breakdown in the last couple of years? Like what portion of our total budget went towards, you know, school academic funding?
And this is rough, if you add in our cap, this does not include our capital, the one hundred funding capital. If you add that in, it's about sixty four thirty six.
Okay. Cool.
These are the changes by category. So this gives you just a, a breakdown per budget category of where we're seeing the changes. Town administrator budget is seeing a large increase, select board budget seeing a seven thousand dollar increase. That is because, just to be clear, that's not an increase in our overall spending. That is because we've consolidated our postage line, our mail postage lines under your budget. So, um, while it looks like an increase, it's actually the same spending in that category. It's just consolidated one, just for really administrative purposes, which makes it easier on, um, our accounting department. Fincom, right, right now the way I propose it sees a ten thousand dollar increase. That is in a salary reserve account. As you know, we're going through the comp and class study right now. We don't have the final outcome or recommendations of that, but in order to implement, we're going to need some funding to do that. That's why that's there. The treasurer department, you're seeing a large increase. That is primarily because as you know, we share a treasurer. Um, the last treasurer took health insurance, bought his health insurance from the town. Um, in this case, we're not sure that's going to happen, so we had to increase the salary in the case that doesn't happen. Police department and fire department are seeing increases. Um, a lot of that is really twofold. One is salary increases, that's funding the new agreement contract and, um, in the fire chief's contract and the communication increases that I talked about earlier. Schools, we already know about it. That's nineteen five, the Greater Lowell Tech. So eighteen, it's nineteen five.
Yeah.
It's just the breakdown of school spending. Highway department, that's salary and then that's repair maintenance, which has gone through the roof for them this year. And also slight increase in the rental and lease line, which is hopefully going to find a new vehicle for the highway superintendent. We are seeing veterans budgets in a decrease based on historic spending. Library is seeing this increase to meet the two and a half percent, um, increase requirement for their certification. So we're making up some, um, on that because we didn't meet it last year. We had to apply for waiver. I T is going up twenty five hundred dollars to, to meet our spending need. That's just what the actual expenses are. And then these are the increases. Like I said, remember, just keep that in mind, the health insurance line is going up that amount, two percent, but it's, the rates are actually increasing by fourteen.
Yeah, that's across the board for my app, right, and many other municipalities?
That's, that's about the average. The range they gave was ten to twenty.
Okay.
The average is right, we're, we're seeing the average. Slightly younger, the average. So there are two budget scenarios that, um, the recommended budget contemplates. One is the level service, which keeps municipal side and the school side's at level service maintains. It's the level service we're, we're providing now. Under the scenario where we have to match the Groton assessment, which is the bottom line number, that's our baseline this year. We can't go any lower than that. We have a deficit of a hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars. Um, just keep in mind that if we're in that scenario, the school, um, Grand Dunsbury Regional School District will need to cut approximately eight hundred seventy five thousand dollars from their budget, which is, you know, on top of the cuts they've had to make for this this year. So roughly, the, this is the, um, tax impact based on FY twenty five, um, tax rates. For the level service budget, it's three hundred and eighty three dollars on the average single family tax bill and to match the Groton assessment, which again will require cuts. Um, it's a hundred and fifty dollars on the average single family tax bill. That is only for the override. The tax impact, the estimated increase with levy without the override is two hundred and five. So if you add those, you have to add two oh five to those numbers to get the actual increase for the average single family homeowner. Hold on. Alright. This is where the funding ends.
So just on those numbers, like, I always think of Michael Scott, and it's like explaining to me like I'm a fifth grader. And, and this is pretty clear to me, but just for the, the person walking into the school to do, to come to town meeting, however we can really make it as, because I see there's another sheet that says if your house is worth a million dollars, here's what the impact is, like, and a lot of people are very lucky that their houses are worth about a million dollars in town. It's kind of the going rate, it feels like. I think we like make it as simple as possible. And I'm not saying this like pointing at you, but just like, this is what the override means to you. Here's what your tax bill is now. Here's what the delta will be. It's gonna be an additional two hundred and fifty dollars, four hundred dollars. And if you divide that by twelve, that's about thirty-five dollars a month. You know, like, because people just, it, it could, your residents get really frustrated when they see a big number. But when you think about thirty-five bucks a month, maybe that's a bit more feasible. I, I don't know, everybody's different, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So just, that, hammering Matt home, because I think that catches people by surprise when they see a big number. But then if you really think about it, oh, forty dollars, okay, that's half the.
In addition to, yeah.
Yeah, right, in addition to the, to two and a half already, we're good, we're on top of it, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, that makes sense.
And maybe that's part of our like communication plan over time, but just like.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, this is my best attempt to put together a schedule and flow chart for us to understand the implication of if this happens, then what happens, basically. So under my scenario, and we had a long conversation at the advisory board meeting about this. Was it last week? I guess it was last week.
I'm still trying to remember.
Me too.
You haven't left this room.
So there was a lot of conversation and I don't know if consensus was met. I, I'd say it probably wasn't, because there was, there were a lot of opinions on how best to approach this. But I'll run this, run down this, and if you're looking for simple, I'm not sure this does it, but I, but I'll do the best I can. So if we are to propose two budgets at town meeting, as I suggest, both override budgets. Or I have here around April fifteenth, um, it will probably be your first meeting in April, so that looks, it may be earlier than that, but just for the sake of argument, April fifteenth, I think is the last day to make the annual town election. You could call two elections. One on the twentieth, which is the annual, which you put the level service override on that ballot. If that were not to be successful, you could also call a special election for June tenth. And you could have the Groton assessment match on, for the special town election. You can have that on the ballot on June tenth. At town meeting, both override budgets are presented. Let's assume, just for the sake of argument, they are adopted and at town meeting. On the twentieth at annual town election, you have an override request for the level service budget. That's the four hundred eighty thousand dollar override. If that passes, we're done. We're in good shape. If it fails, we move to June tenth for the lower number. That's the special election. If it passes, there are two options. One, if Groton fails, their level service budget override. We're, we're good. We have a balanced budget because we passed the lower budget at town meeting.
And then Groton, they need to go back and figure out what they're gonna do.
They would be, they would be good too.
Yeah.
Because they, they, they're gonna pass a balanced budget and they'll be fine.
They, they already approved the one eighty-eight?
Yes, that's happened.
Yeah.
That is the baseline number. If Groton passes their level service budget, then we, and we pass the smaller override, then we're in deficit by approximately three hundred thousand dollars. So in that case, and if it fails, we're gonna have to schedule a special town, a special town meeting. We can have that on June twenty-sixth. We'd have to post, we have to post it. Um, we need two weeks to post for a special. And then at the special town meeting, we'll have to adopt a balanced budget, um, based on reductions.
Because we still have the obligation to pay our assessment regardless, yeah.
Put this in a box.
So, yeah.
And or a box.
Yeah, yeah. Now, this isn't the only scenario. There are men, there are several others that we could do. We could just, we could present one budget at town meeting. We could present the level service budget and a balanced budget at town meeting. If we wanna present a balanced budget, how are we gonna balance it? Do we wanna base it on the level service budget cuts? Or do we wanna base it on the Groton assessment cut, matching the Groton assessment cuts? I mean, those are the type of decisions that we need to bank. I like this approach the best because it gives us, we at least have a safety net with a smaller number if it fails in Groton and we still need to meet their assessment number.
And to carry this forward more, on June eleventh or the twenty-sixth, if, if it fails again, we just keep trying?
Do you all know?
What's that? Just do a pepper, you keep going back, and then you have, you do a one-twelfth budget as of July one.
You can't do a one-twelfth budget. You couldn't do that.
Because we wouldn't be meeting the assessment that the schools require.
Regional school district's allowed to do a one-twelfth or not.
We're not.
You can't do a one-twelfth.
Yeah.
So because we wouldn't have a balanced budget, we'd, we'd have contingency budgets at the annual. Two contingency budgets based on different override numbers.
Okay.
So because of that, on June eleventh, the day after the special election, the select board would have to post a meeting, you know, on whatever, June eighth or whatever.
Yeah.
And be ready to call a special for, uh, special town meeting on June twenty-sixth. And in between that, we balance the budget based on either four hundred eighty thousand dollars worth of cuts or three hundred thousand dollars worth of cuts.
Becomes a bare bonus.
Yeah, yeah, okay. It's herky-jerky and not the easiest to, uh, navigate and explain, but I don't. There are others straightforward, more straightforward, but this is, I think, the one that I'm most comfortable with. But I know advisory had some opinions and some very good points in their, in their discussion.
The main concern that we had was, at least, I, I believe the main concern we had was, I proposed the two, we're giving people options. And why wouldn't they go for the lower amount? And again, I, I really think there is a misunderstanding of the regional school agreement and what our goal is in that agreement. Which is, you don't have a choice. It's your final one date. Right, so right now, that's, we have to, you don't, we don't have a choice.
It's already been agreed upon.
Yeah, and I don't think people quite understand that. Like, I really, I still really believe they don't, because, and, and if they don't, we don't pass the one eighty-eight, it's, it means we're going to cut the town. Because, I mean, school doesn't get, there's no cut for that.
Right.
Um, I, I personally like the, the bigger override amount for obvious reasons, particularly as meaning, um, if, if Groton fails, it, when we look back at history, it means that we're not gonna have, you know, we're not gonna need to have a whole lot of taxes. Because that's historically, that's what happens.
Yeah. Well, even asking for the bigger override, it's not like it's feather in our bed. It's still working on a pretty very lean budget, but it's preventing having the school to make some additional significant cuts that it had to do last year. So saying a bigger budget, I mean, almost sounds like, oh, okay, we get to do all kinds of fun things with it, but that's, that's really not the case. That's allowing the school to continue as it is functioning without having to make additional cuts. And allows our town to continue as it is functioning without any significant additional.
Yeah. And, and the other argument I would make is that over the past, like since two thousand and eight, with the exception of last year.
Yeah.
Any cut schools had to make is because Groton was not able to meet their assessment, not because of us, because we passed you for us.
We passed it, yeah. Yeah.
So I.
I, I understand Jason, and I totally understand where Jason's coming from. He's, you know, if it doesn't pass, then what do we do? I mean, if, but if Groton does pass it, we're, we're gonna be in a very different. If the one, if we go for the one eighty-eight and Groton, you know, we don't, if, if we go for the four, I don't know, what is it, the four?
Four, four maybe.
Yeah, four eighty override, and Groton passes theirs, because they're, they're largely on the same day, we're gonna have a big problem in the morning if we don't pass ours.
Right, which is why we have this, uh, scenario here, yeah.
So that's the concern, the concern, these are the graduate, both came, came along, was
Yeah.
if we're, if we're giving them, people two options for making it sound like there are two options, when I personally don't believe what it really is.
Well, there's obviously the, the option of making sure everybody is being funded. And the other option is sort of an austerity measure, so.
Well, like, when I.
The, 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 yeah, I mean, the, the question is, do we want, the difference between the two options is an eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar cut to the schools when they just cut two point seven or something this year, um, in twenty-four positions. That's.
Thirty, 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 twenty-four is what they propose if the override doesn't pass.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four this year.
Position is.
Yeah, this year, yes, or yeah.
Twenty-four this year.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the, that's the difference. It's, do people really think it's sustainable for them to continue to cut that kind of, um, funding from the budget year over year?
I hear Matt's point about to give people two numbers, they're gonna choose the lower one. And I think at town meeting, there'll be some discussion, but overall, I think, as usual, it'll probably be resisted but pass, and then in the ballot, it's always quieter in the ballot box.
Yeah.
People, you know, really do some penny pinching, and they think, well, I don't want my taxes to go up that much. It's already been, I believe, here, eggs are through the roof. So people probably take the lower number, just based out of, that's what you should do.
But if they're, they need to really understand the repercussions of that too. I mean, and how, but, again, there's a point we can't.
Can't force people.
Promote, but we also can't campaign one way or the other.
Right.
So.
But you know, I think there was a good, there was a good effort made by a lot of folks last year in town, and it unfortunately didn't work out. I'm hoping they're not, you know, disillusioned to not wanna come out again. And it's, we're a little early in the game, but we're, March feels like it flew by. Right? Like, all of a sudden, March was over, and I'm like, where are we going?
I think the dynamics are different this year. Obviously, we're not asking for as much as we were last year. But I also think there's, there's a very different, um, attitude coming from the schools right now with, there's a new superintendent. Um, I, I really think that notable was rejection of the superintendent last year. Because it was extremely unpopular, including with the teachers.
My one concern for the schools, and I've said this to them at that sort of joint meeting at, is are you gonna be asking for another one next year? And like, that, like, and like, that's, and I think it was Paul, one of, Bud Robinson, I keep using him, because I thought he did a good job very nicely saying, like, aren't we just gonna do this again next year? And I think that sustainability is what's discouraging.
I think two things we could look at is Jake, is that are we ever gonna get to two point five?
Right.
And that's it?
Well, right, you're always gonna have this issue.
I will say, this is the lowest increase I've ever seen them ask for. Even when the first draft, what they were asking for came out, was it's the lowest increase I've seen in, since I've been on, on the average report.
Yeah.
So, to me, they're, it's heading in the right direction.
They'll never get to two point five though.
No, and, and you know, and, you know, part of it could be, um, you know, for, you know, the salaries are a huge proportion of that budget.
Yeah.
You know, um, you know, they, they're, in some ways, their hands are tied. So I, I, at least I see that number coming down when I didn't see it coming down five years before that.
Yeah. So you, what do you, what do you?
Yeah, I mean.
What do you need from us?
So.
We have emotion.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I just want everyone to be comfortable with the, the approach, really, um, because it's, it could end up being a long two months, April, May.
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm sorry, May and June.
Well, we're not really, okay, so with this approach, there's one override scenario being presented.
No.
You do, you are doing both.
Two override budgets presented at town meeting. At the annual election.
Okay.
The level service larger override will be on the ballot. If that passes, we're good. If it fails.
Okay, no, both are, alright, both are being presented and, but they're being explained, but there's only one being voted on.
No.
Both, both are on that ballot.
No, at the annual election.
At the annual.
Only the larger.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
And then if that fails.
If that fails, correct.
Then we'll have a special election from June tenth for the smaller number.
Right, okay.
If that fails, then we're, then we're at the special town meeting the last, the last week of June, we get a budget cut.
Yeah.
So if that happens, right, if the, the larger amount fails, now, on the same day that Groton's having their election. And that, if it passes, what happens? Because the one eighty-eight won't fly.
We're gonna have a deficit no matter what. If the, if, on June tenth, if the smaller override passes, we'll have a three hundred thousand dollar deficit. We'll still have to have a special town meeting for a balanced budget.
It would, it would be getting pretty grim at that point.
Oh, yeah. So we'd have to have a spec, so if their, if their override passes and our first one does it, we're gonna go for a special town meeting again? Is that it?
Should I say that one more time?
So at the, at our town meeting, right, we're gonna pass two budgets, one with the one eighty-eight override and one with the four. The election will only have the four on.
For annual.
Yes. But if Groton passes their override of schools.
Yeah.
Specifically. Then they'll, if the one eighty-eight budget that we've now passed won't fly anymore.
Right.
So, uh, what I'm asking is if their override happens, it passed, what does that do? I mean, because we, we have to have more than just another special election, right?
Oh, no, we're, we'll have the special election to see if people will fund the smaller override. And then we have to have a special town meeting to pass a balanced budget. Based on the outcome of the, the special election on the tenth.
So we may end up having to just get to the bigger number, but just in a couple of different steps.
Yeah, it, it, it would, at that point, it would be strange, because people would be voting to pass an override to lessen the reduction. We're still gonna have significant reductions.
Right.
Yeah.
It would just be less reductions. Yeah.
Yuck. Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So, I mean, I agree, I think what Karen said was that, you know, we show basically one page thing of what the school costs. And failure to do it is gonna be what? Well, it's gonna be close the library.
Yeah.
It's gonna be, the police department is, um, I mean, they're sending a message.
It's right there.
Yeah.
But we're sending a message to the police departments that, you know, you cannot give us what we need here. And it's gonna, it's gonna hurt all across the board.
Yeah.
Yeah, and like, that's where I would be. Just, I mean, I, I would be stealing from today to save tomorrow on free cash. I'd be like, what's the point of stabilization if we, you know, literally, if that's a, you know, every penny counts. I'd be like, don't worry about stabilization, take the money and.
But we've been doing that for decades, and it's not helped, because having stabilization would, if we had a bigger buffer through stabilization, we would be able to help our budget out a little bit better. Than we can do now.
But fifty K against is kind of a farce.
Yeah, but it builds, it builds.
It's not a farce, I, I totally disagree because it's not just fifty K. It's an annual commitment to do it. And if you do fifty K for the next five years, it's two hundred and fifty K, I'm probably a three fifty K. And we're actually at where we should be.
And it compounds.
It's, it's not a farce. I wouldn't be doing it if it was a farce.
But if, if it was that or a position, like to keep someone gainfully employed.
Yeah, that's the decision.
Right, I mean, my, my, I like the people, I like to support the people who work in the building.
I completely agree with you too, but had we been doing this like we should have been doing all along. We would have that buffer to be able to support it. To support these hits that were taking other places.
Yeah, but you still need a town meeting vote to pull it out. And you still have to convince the townspeople out there.
Yeah, but it's funny that it's already been put aside. So it's not like it's costing them more to vote to take it out of stabilization to be able to support something.
Yeah.
I mean, it's building, it's, it's a savings account, basically. And you obviously have to take the hit at some point, but eventually it is gonna pay off. And it is there for you to use and to build it up and.
Oh, and I, I know my practice is a terrible way to do budgeting. I know, but it's not how I practice my own budgeting, but I don't, like, if it meant not closing the library or, you know, ensuring that we had. You know, full police staff, I would be advocating for that over stuffing money away for.
Well, but if we had been stuffing money away, we may not be in the same position now. It's a practice that should have been done for ages.
The hard part, but.
The schools last year, they would not have ended the mess they were in if they had done what we told them to do for the four years prior to that, which was cut. They did cut. They pulled money from other places until it ran out.
Yeah.
And last year, they had, they had to do some major cuts because they didn't do what, what every other town in the district was doing, the operational thing.
Yeah, but that's what we've been doing too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's the point, like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If, if you wanna continue to do that, we're never gonna get out of it.
Yes.
And just don't forget, like, what I just presented. Some of the free cash generation is local receipts. Guess what, guys? We're losing fifty thousand dollars because we're counting on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, health insurance, guess what? We're not increasing the rates. Guess what that's gonna do? Decrease your free cash.
Yeah.
So you can count on the free cash to balance, but guess what? The way we're budgeting right now, we're not gonna have it to balance.
Yeah, next year it could be two hundred.
I mean, it won't be because we're leaving, it won't be because we're leaving the balance, but it has to be proportionate.
Mm-hmm.
You, you can, if, if you're not spending as much, you can take down on the other side. You know what I mean? You don't have to generate as much, as much because you have a balance.
Mm-hmm.
And it's that balance, but if you're, if you're, you know, eating into your budget flexibility and, and dramatically increasing revenues that you're counting on balance. Guess what? That's a recipe for disaster.
Yeah.
And it, it's an option, but it's a really bad option. But it is an option. And if, like you said, I mean, if it's, if it's a really bad scenario. I, I understand the people who don't wanna talk about that. We should talk about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I guess that mean. If they have, what the one question, the four eighty, can change to vote on, in the, in the ballot, we just gotta be hopeful, I guess, I don't know.
Well, hopeful as well as explaining what the real implications are too. And, and the school's gotta step up and plead their case and say, this is, this is what will happen. This is the impact that we have already seen from the cuts last year. It's gonna be that much more exacerbated. We're gonna, this will be more behavioral issues if that's what they're having. Or whatever the impacts they have, they need to be very clear and explain to us that this is, this is the right way for us to go. And our due diligence is to, you know, make sure that our town is continuing to function and be. Safe and providing the services that people want and need and making everything work, um.
Groton made it very clear, if we don't meet our commitment, then they, they would call for a special town meeting.
I'm not surprised. They've been saying that for years.
Yeah.
And, you know, maybe, so be it, right? I mean. As you, you well know, you put together that great spreadsheet of how frequently they have not passed overrides. So there are a lot of folks over there that seem to not be keen either, but.
Yeah, that's interesting, interesting Facebook chatter about it and some, some confusion it seemed like, but, I mean, hopefully all come up.
Yeah.
Yeah, there.
The numbers indeed.
Groton has gone for two, as you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two overrides.
Yeah.
So what do you, we need to read this draft motion here.
Yeah.
Ideally.
Yeah, as long as everyone's on the same page, the same page.
Yeah, I, you know, this, this.
I mean, the only other option is to present a balanced budget, which is gonna be.
Gray.
A foggy day. And it's not, it's not good, so.
Yeah.
Ideally, you don't have to do it. We can avoid that, but if we have to do that, well, I'd rather do it. When we have no other options, which will be at a special town meeting on June twenty-sixth.
That's true.
None of this works.
Yeah.
Um, that would be my, that would be my preference.
Okay.
Well, and I know you've been working on this and mulling this over and losing sleep for months.
Yeah, a lot, a lot.
You didn't just throw this together.
No.
And we've been having many, many meetings and conversations with Groton, their advisory board, the school committee, select board. We've all been meeting, so this, this, these are decisions that have not been taken lightly or come easily at all. And obviously, we're still discussing it, but we're hitting a, we're hitting a wall where we need to be making final decisions here.
Yes.
I think we're there.
Yeah.
I mean, it is what it is.
It is what it is.
Leave it up to the residents and, and hope, hope for the best.
Okay, you ready, Will?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to recommend the town administrators and advisory boards recommended fiscal year twenty twenty-six operating budget. With a total expenditure of fourteen million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty. Which includes a hundred and twenty thousand for town capital expenses. Fifty thousand transferred to the general stabilization fund. Fifty thousand dollar transfer to the CIP's stabilization fund. And funding the Groton Dunspur Regional School District Assessment at the amount of nine million, twenty-nine sixty-eight. Requiring a general override of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Four hundred and eighty equal one thousand dollars to be presented to the residents of the town of Dunspur. At the annual town meeting on Monday, May twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Further, I move to approve the town administrator present a second contingency budget at the annual town meeting. Based on matching the town of Groton's assessment under their levy in the amount of thirteen million, nine hundred and twenty-two, five hundred and seventy-two thousand. Which includes a hundred and twenty thousand for the town's capital expenses. Fifty thousand transferred to the general stabilization fund. Fifty thousand dollar transfer to the CIP stabilization fund. And funding the Groton Dunspur Regional School District Assessment at the amount of eight million, seven hundred and twenty-nine, ninety thousand dollars. Requiring an override of a hundred and eighty-eight, nine sixty-three.
Second.
I hate reading numbers a lot. I'm terrible at it.
You're so good at it, though.
I get nervous and I'm like, did I say the wrong number?
All right, well, second.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Karen, be that.
All right, yeah, all right.
I just wanna thank Jason for all the time work on that, putting that together. I think he did a great job. And he actually gave us something we really had to really think about. But we usually kind of, you know, just kinda see it from one lens. And, um, something I didn't think about was that, like, the, like, the last two years he's been here, um, we haven't, we haven't been able to pass an override. Um, and that's something, that's something I didn't really think about until he had mentioned it.
Yeah.
That, you know, I kind of think for a minute that we have, it's gonna be, it should be that's passed. Um, I do think this, I do think there's a big change this year in the bloodline.
The school did have a great one pager. It was a one-page document that I saw online.
Great.
I was like, well, look at that.
Yeah, you know, better than that.
Groton will, will do, will read the one.
Understood.
No, this has been, it's been a hard, hard journey. Um, but I think we're, we're definitely trying to move in the right, in the right direction and sort of shore up our accounts a little bit.
Yeah.
It's also like, we, we've run out of bandwidth. Like, literally, like, you know, we can't change any more light bulbs to high efficiency, like, it is what it is.
Yeah, right, right.
And I, I worry and I think of that joint meeting we had where we don't have a lot of attendance, but people are watching at home, which is great, but we. I don't know if people understand how frustrating it is to be a parent right now in the school system. And I think I'm really encouraging parents to connect with each other because I don't have a child in the school system. I can't tell you what it's like there day to day, but I've heard it's bleak. And I think the only way to correct or course change that action is by coming out and voting. And demonstrating that to your children, that, that's a really important thing to do. Without me being preachy, like, I don't know what else to say.
Well, and there are, there's a plug for the things that are coming up. For tomorrow, there are three opportunities to ask questions, meet Jason, I'll be there, um, Lacy will be there.
Yeah, superintendent.
And superintendent, um, to ask questions, um, either the town hall, the library. There's options for, to come to your home and we'll have a conversation if you need that as well. So I think we're really making a big push here to get the information out, answer the questions people have, just to.
It's everything short of going door to door and being like, we talked to you for five minutes.
Yeah.
I don't know how else to advocate for it, you know, not.
Put together your one pager and.
I can, I will. You know, or you have Facebook Live on, on Facebook, but.
Whatever.
And have people just throw haymakers at you and see what you have to say. I don't know how else to, you know, connect with folks sometimes.
And there is, what, this community budget forum on April sixteenth?
We can do that again. We had that cookie and cupcake that year.
Yeah, another one for, hell, that's, so there's a lot of, there are a lot of opportunities and different ways for people to, to reach out and get. Questions answered if they, if they choose. Aside from the newsletter that's gone out and all the info that's going out, the push that goes out and, yeah, there's, um. Yeah, enough said.
We're getting as much information out as, as we can.
Yeah, more so than ever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll do everything we can for all the channels we have.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? I don't have anything else that I didn't anticipate.
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, second. All those in favor?
Get it up.
All right.
All right.
Great.
Thanks, buddy.
All right, thank you all.
Godspeed, enjoy the sunlight.
Yeah, right, look at that.